Then it's filling in as the.
We're gonna wean it, David.
Oh, that was for John.
How are you? Yeah, turn that one on. I think we're set. I just gotta put the speaker right there.
Have we got cripples or not?
Well, now you've got a square one.
By this one.
I want to do that.
Yeah, yeah, it's been, yeah. It's been a really lot of new experiences. How about you? Commissioner Sullivan, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Gary, you did that one. Do a test.
Tomorrow should be the tester.
This time, yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, she's back for two meetings in a row.
Josh Case Corosol. Hi, Josh, can you hear us?
I can. How you guys doing?
Good. How about you?
Good. I'm doing good.
Good.
I heard you guys got some snow.
Yeah, yeah. About two inches in Farmington and closer to four out in Aztecs, so.
Wow. That's a lot for down there.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, definitely. Well, hey, we're, uh, we're gonna get started here pretty shortly, so stand by.
Great.
Hey, Devin, Mike Starb.
Hey, Mike.
Hey, uh, Mr. Toto Chan, come on, he's here.
She's having trouble. She said she can't get the WebEx, um, application to run on her laptop, so that's an IT situation. That's above my pay grade.
I wonder if she can charge us.
She made us a, as a panelist and as an attendee, and she got further with attendee than panelist, but it wants her to install something and won't let her.
Can we have her call in?
Uh, yeah. You have the number?
Uh, go ahead.
Hmm, hold on just a sec. The number is 484189388. And the event number is 1467144503.
Okay, let me, let me give you a phone number. Okay.
Hey, Devin, do you have that access card again, please? It's 146?
Yes, exactly. Okay, great. Jim will be looking for your call. Thanks.
Commissioners, I was made the host.
Hey, Josh, that's okay. We're, apologies for having some technical difficulties. Door persons out, but not to worry. You don't have to host it.
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear us?
No problem.
Okay, and we can hear you.
Okay.
Can you hear her?
Yeah, I can hear it on the speakers.
Okay, good, all right. So, and I guess Commissioner Sullivan, do you have anyone to do?
Commissioner Sullivan, can you hear us?
Oh, you just got muted.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I can hear you. Devin, whoever it is.
Yeah, it's, uh, Jim, Devin's out.
We'll call this, uh, meeting to order. We're running a little bit late with some technical difficulties, but, uh, we'll just take half time, uh, out of the CEO's time, or the president's time. Make a note that eight minutes comes out of Mike's time. Start off with the invitation of who's in the mayor's group, but leave us in. Where we ask that you look over the folks that are traveling this, this weather today, and give us the power to make good decisions, um, look over the citizens. I'll leave us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one and only, in this little liberty and justice. All right, that brings us to a presentation of the fiscal year 2019 audit accountability award.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, uh, actually a great pleasure to present to you another award, um, to the finance department. You know, this is actually in coordination to Mexico counties, county state auditor, look at all of the different governmental entities within the state, uh, practical financial practices, outstanding audits, um, they look at the degree of findings, they look at our receiving audits, and ultimately the results of those audits. And so each year, uh, the New Mexico State Auditor Brian Klon has the pleasure of presenting legislative conference, um, different awards. Those awards range from Continued Excellence to the Glass Flame Award, Continued Prudence, and they actually added a Charis Act special, special certificate this year. Um, I'm happy to, uh, to present to you all, uh, this FY19 audit accountability award for FY19 fiscal year. Uh, it's through the hard work and dedication of, uh, finance department, everything that we need to implement, we have sound financial, uh, practices, we're calling off the computer, following all of state statute and federal statutes that matter. Um, additionally, it's through all of the, um, hard work and dedication to all of the development to help make that possible. Um, and so today I wanted to ask that you all present this to the board, uh, in recognition of this award. Yes, in a COVID safe manner, yeah.
Yes, I know.
Jim, give the picture.
That's where Jack's normal smile comes in. How did I get between? All right, that gets us into our rate. Brings us to the approval of the agenda. Mr. Paper Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
A question for most of the. Having been moved and seconded, uh, those in favor of a decision when the president has presented, say aye. Aye. You can vote, uh, same time. And I'll start out by saying that, uh, if we don't hear anybody speak up as to if not being our man, I'll assume that it was a unanimous vote on the votes moving forward in the meeting today. So that brings us to the consent agenda. So no may have any issues with the consent agenda. There are no issues with the approval of the agenda. I'll stand for a motion regarding the consent agenda. Having been moved and seconded, uh, are those starting to read every item on the consent agenda?
It's probably an idea to read the title.
So, uh, for discussion, I'll read, I'll read the titles of the items. Consideration for approval of December 2020 register, treasure, uh, check register. Number three, consideration for approval of December 2020 finance check registers. Number three, consideration.
As far as McConnell and the President's.
Commissioner Sullivan, can you, uh, mute whatever's going on in your background?
Do what now?
Can you mute whatever's going on in your background? We can hear it in the meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you. And number three is consideration of the fiscal year 21 budget adjustment, number eight, resolution number 20 dash 21 dash 38. Uh, number four is consideration of approval for regular meeting minutes from January 5th, 2021. There's a standing motion and a second. I don't believe it calls for discussion, so those in favor of the consent agenda, uh, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, I will assume that it's asking now. Brings us to new business on the, on the agenda. Uh, number one is consideration of notice of intent to adopt resolution number 20 dash 21 dash 39, approving three notices of intent to adopt ordinances, number 114, number 115, and number 116, authorizing industrial revenue bonds for San Juan Solar One LLC replacement power project relative to the San Juan generator station. I believe we have, uh, David Buckles and Louis Carrasco, San Juan County Board Attorneys, present this action. Mr. Buckle.
Can you hear me?
Oh, we can now. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the commission. Um, this is David Buckles from the Rhodey Law Firm. My colleague, um, Mr. Carrasco is here with me. Um, this is the second of three, um, presentations that we will be making to the board on this project. The first one was back in December, uh, before the, um, new commissioners came on, uh, where the, um, commission, uh, passed the initial, uh, so-called inducement resolution, which indicated the interest of the, uh, board to go forward, uh, with this project. Um, today you have before you, um, the statutorily required resolution calling for your, um, board to hear ordinances, um, at the, um, what will be the second meeting in February. Um, and then in February, you will consider this matter for the third and last time, uh, considering, um, the substance. What you have is industrial revenue bonds, bonds for which, um, the commission has no financial responsibility, but is a vehicle to, um, allow, um, the developer in connection with this renewable energy project to achieve certain tax advantages with the state. Um, in this case, the developer, uh, Mr. Case is here today, and I'm sure he'll be happy to answer questions in regard to the details of this project, has agreed to pay all property taxes to the county, um, to the, um, school district and to the college, um, in connection with this project, and is seeking only to avoid, uh, the grocery receipts and compensating tax. Um, it's a project that's broken into three parts, renewable energy components for a solar field, um, a battery facility, and a transmission facility. Uh, Mr. Case would have more details on that. Um, uh, for a total amount of capital investment not to exceed $450 million and split up among those three, uh, projects. There have been discussions as recently as last week, uh, with Mr. Stock, Mr. Cox, county attorney, uh, Mr. Echols, uh, my, my colleague, Mr. Crassil, myself, and Mr. Case's people about these details, and I believe that, uh, information has been supplied, um, to the CEO regarding the number of, uh, temporary and permanent jobs that will be associated with the project and other relevant factors, um, that will be considered in, uh, going forward. Uh, if you pass this, um, uh, resolution tonight, we will then, um, proceed to a publication, um, of the intention to adopt, uh, ordinances at the, um, meeting, that's the second, um, meeting in February. We have already sent notices to the, um, uh, taxing jurisdictions indicating the expectation that this project may go forward. Um, and then, as I said, the final approvals, along with the final documents, will be presented for your consideration and approval, um, at that meeting in February. Uh, we will, um, at that time have all of the details of the payment in lieu of tax arrangements to be made relative to the property taxes, the documentations protecting the county in regard to any responsibilities other than its assistance in moving this project forward for tax purposes, um, and other matters that are typically considered in industrial revenue bonds. Um, the county itself has not done an industrial revenue bond in some time, although it did do one for Braxair, um, about 10 years ago. Um, and this project is actually similar in structure to a number of projects that counties have been doing, particularly on the east side of the state, um, in rural areas, Torrance County, um, Lincoln County, Curry County, um, Guadalupe County. Um, this is the first one, though, um, that San Juan is considering, uh, but the structure and the requirements will be similar to what has been undertaken by, um, those counties out in the east. So with that, I might turn things over either to the CEO or to, um, Mr. Echols, and then maybe, uh, it's the commission's pleasure, they may want to hear a short presentation from Mr. Case. Um, I'll leave that up to the CEO, though, and I'll, I'm happy to answer further questions if you like.
Mr. Buckles, uh, first I want to thank you for presenting today. I know, uh, you're probably mourning the not having your, your good friend, Jack Wharton, during the meeting. I appreciate the efficiency where you presented this.
I, I do know there's at least one good friend of Jack Wharton who's sitting on the commission now, and Commissioner, I'm glad to see you as well. Uh, um, Jack and I knew each other for a very long time, and he did a great job, um, both here at the county and then also for the unit of New Mexico, as I'm sure you know.
And, and, you know, I, I, I think we have the better four parroted out. Um, I, I do want to bring up that we, we did receive two letters, uh, one from the Farmington Chamber of Commerce, or from the Farmington Chamber, and from the Four Corners Economic Development, Incorporated, and they were appreciative of the project that's coming in, uh, but they, and they sent letters encouraging, uh, that, that Fodosol, uh, that they, and eight minutes they move forward, that, that they use, uh, local contractors. Do you know if there's anything in place or if what the plan is regarding using local labor contractors?
Mr. Chair, I mean, Man Chairman and, um, Commissioner, uh, when we come to you with the particular documents, we will create, um, appropriate covenants in those documents for those purposes, but, uh, Mr. Case may want to answer particularly, uh, what his expectations and his plans are, uh, in the local construction area and in other areas regarding, um, the use of, um, uh, local businesses and local industry.
Okay, perhaps that'll, that'll be addressed. You said there was a short. Okay, perhaps that'll, that'll be addressed. You said there was a short presentation?
Um, uh, either, um, uh, CEO stock or, or Mr. Case may want to add a little bit on, um, those particular details.
Mr. Case, did you want to present at all?
Yeah, I, I, if, uh, the commission is interested, I can give a overview of the project.
That would be great.
Yeah, um, I, I don't have a PowerPoint tonight, uh, but, uh, but I presented one, uh, previously to the commission. Uh, this, uh, first project is two hundred acres, uh, with a hundred megawatts of, uh, skin reach. It's a contract with Public Service of New Mexico. Will be intercommuting at the San Juan Generating. Um, the site is, uh, about five miles northeast of, uh, the San Juan Generating Station. We're estimating a, a total, uh, capital expenditure to install the project of around four hundred million dollars. Um, peak construction, um, we, we've just ran our EPC RC, we're getting between three hundred and fifty and four hundred, uh, construction workers out there at peak. And then, uh, long-term, it's a maintenance jobs, uh, five to six, uh, for the project. Um, the project was, uh, approved by the New Mexico PRC in early December of last year and went beyond appeal the first week of, uh, of, uh, January, so we're.
I think we may have lost you.
Oh, can you guys hear me?
Oh, we can now. Thank you.
Um, so I went, went, I went past the appeal period, uh, the first week of, uh, January, so we're full steam ahead. Um, we plan to start construction in late spring of this year and, uh, be online by June tenth, twenty twenty three. And, uh, comment on, uh, local contractors, uh, we use a local as much as possible. And, uh, we're encouraging our, uh, EPC firm who will be, uh, installing the project to, to hire construction workers locally as much as possible, and we're planning on having, uh, job fairs.
Okay. And, uh, uh, we, we do appreciate that. Is there, is that the end of your presentation?
Uh, open to any questions.
Okay. Um, I, I know there has been some talk, uh, and I, and we appreciate that, uh, that, uh, the property taxes are going to be paid in full. I think that, that comes, uh, as a requirement under the ETA and, and, but, but we do appreciate that. We appreciate these projects. Um, I, I did hear some discussion about, uh, how the property taxes would be repaid if, if they would be depreciated or if there would, uh, uh, be some type of leveling, uh, in regards to that. Um, I'm not sure where we're at in, in those discussions. I think they're ongoing. Um, and, and I, I think I just kind of wanted to, to touch base on that, to get your position on how, how those two different models, uh, relate to the ETA and, you know, how, how that would tie in with the ETA and meet the requirements of that.
Yeah, uh, we, we've been discussing that, uh, with the county and, you know, we're, we, we'd like to continue discussing it, but, uh, you know, and, and, uh, but, you know, we, we're, we're, we're open to it either way.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, i- if I could, um, we are exploring with counsel, um, to the company, um, the appropriate way under law, uh, as to how this may be accomplished. Um, as you probably know, um, the requirements of statute, um, change as of, um, July of last year, both with changes in the, um, Industrial Revenue Bond Act and also, uh, in the, um, Transition Act. And so there's not a lot of history on the ground for how that calculation has been made other than to make sure that the jurisdictions are made whole. So, uh, we're going to try to accommodate, uh, what the county's needs are, what the school district and the, um, uh, colleges' needs are, make sure that nobody has any questions in regard to whether those arrangements are appropriate under the act, uh, and then come to a conclusion. And when we come to you in four weeks with the final documents, we'll have a presentation on how we concluded that and what we said in the documents that we'll put before you at that time.
Okay. Mr. Buckles, do you know if we reached out to CCSD and the college to kind of fill out how, where they're at with that whole process?
My understanding is that we have a letter of support from the college, but, and that attempts have been made to the, to reach out to the school district, but that, um, people have been sort of passing in the evening on, um, on making those communications work. Um, but I do think we have a letter, uh, that the company's obtained a letter of support from the college and is continuing to reach out to the school districts, and we will have to the school district, and we will have to have that done before we come back to you in four weeks.
And this is just a notice of intent, so we have time between now and, and before the actual rubber meets the road?
That's correct.
Okay. Any, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Brickholdts. This is Commissioner Lanier.
How are you, Commissioner?
Good. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
Um, I apologize if you'd mentioned, what about the state tax? Are we abating those also?
Um, there is a requirement, at least for a portion of this, um, tax, uh, the property tax, to be paid in connection with the transmission portion of the transaction, and we will work on that. Uh, a primary tax that the state is being abated from is the compensating tax. That would be the statey equivalent of grocery receipts taxes on the equipment that's being purchased. And the project will allow avoidance of that compensating tax. Um, the state property tax is small. Uh, the state only charges property taxes for state general obligation bonds purposes, so it's relatively small. Uh, and I don't know whether we've reached a conclusion on the abatement of that or not, although in the past, um, the county has, um, approved an abatement of state property taxes. So in other words, to summarize that, there is a requirement in the Transition Act that, um, and in the new, new changes to the IRB Act, that some small portion be paid to the state on the property tax for the transmission, uh, portion of the project. The significant abatement to the state is the avoidance of the compensating tax. And the smaller portion of the state property tax on the other pieces, I, I think we still haven't resolved how we'll go on that one way or the other.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have one more question for you. On the, when you were talking about the employment, how many we were employed and the long-term employment? What about, I, I understand you're going to try to get your supplies from San Juan County also? Is that the way I understood that?
What, supplies, uh, you mean, what are you referring to?
Well, like the, the, um, the things it's going to take to build the, the solar panels, or do they come in in one package already, ready to go? Um, the concrete that, that you're going to pour, stuff like that, are you going to try to get all of that out of San Juan County?
So we'll, we'll be hiring an engineering firm that can work the project. Um, I, I can't answer that question, um, but, uh, right now, but I can get with them and see what they're planning.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I think I have one more question. Uh, Mr. Buckles, is there, is it fair to say that the county doesn't take on any liability, uh, regarding, uh, proceeding with this?
Uh, that is correct. Um, the documents will have appropriate indemnities and protections for the county, um, in regard to, um, uh, proceeding with the project. Uh, and further, um, the law would indicate that since the county is only, um, operating in effect as a conduit, that is, as a helper to the developer, um, in regard to its obtaining tax benefits, that any, uh, uh, ownership provisions that are required by the documents do not impose any liability provisions. So you have that protection of the law and further protections from indemnities, so the county would be protected in regard to those matters.
Very well. Uh, I guess just one more question for Mr. Eccles before we proceed. Do we need to do three separate motions, or can we do one motion including all three?
Um, the way we set this up, Mr. Chairman, was we do one motion to approve the resolution, and the resolution within its paragraphs approved the three notices of intent. So you only have to do it one time.
Very well.
I did say that right, didn't I, Mr. Carrasco?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So with that, if there's, uh, no other questions, I'll stand for a motion.
I know you can't see me on TV, but I made a motion to.
You, you're moving to approve resolution number twenty twenty one thirty nine, is that correct, Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Do I have a second? Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any, uh, those in favor of approving resolution number twenty twenty one dash thirty nine and the three notices of intent to adopt ordinances number one, one, four, uh, one, one, five, and one, one, six. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Not hearing any, any opposition, I will assume that it was, uh, passed unanimously, uh, through our, our wonderful technology.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission.
Thank you. That brings us to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. That brings us to, uh, our item number two, which is, uh, review of boards, uh, and committee appointments. And it's going to be presented by our county manager, Mike Stark.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Um, this is our annual presentation of this list to you, for you all to review, um, boards and committees by which the county, either by agreement or by nature of the board, we have a, a seat or multiple seats on those various boards. And so before you tonight is a draft list, uh, that we've put together. A lot of these folks are, are carryover representatives, some by nature of the board, for example, the communications, our criminal justice training authority, the sheriff would, would, would be the one that would fill that role. Um, and you see, that's just the first one on the list, Mr. Eccles also serves as legal counsel. And so we try to capture all those various boards, um, throughout the county, like I said, by agreement or by, by nature of the, of the committee or board. So, um, we have verified those, uh, folks that are, are non-elected officials, to see if they're willing to continue to serve on some of these boards, such as the DWI Planning Council, uh, the Farm and Range Improvement Fund, um, are just a couple of examples. But, uh, certainly I would stand for any questions you might have and/or any changes you would like to make to the draft list that's being presented to you tonight.
Any questions for the, uh, manager? No? Well, if there's, uh, no questions or no changes, then I'll stand for a motion. Sir, it's been moved and seconded, moved by, uh, Commissioner Sullivan and seconded by, uh, Commissioner Fortner, uh, is there any other discussion, any further discussion? Not hearing any further discussion, uh, those in favor of approving the review or approving the boards and committee appointments as outlined in the draft, uh, boards and committee appointments. Uh, those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I will assume that it was passed unanimously unless somebody, uh, states otherwise now. All right, that takes us on to item number three, which is the Rockmont Solar and Storage Project. I believe Dan Nelson, the vice president of, uh, Eight Minutes Solar is going to be presenting to us. Mr. Nelson.
Yes, good afternoon, good afternoon, uh, Honorable Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you so much for providing me the opportunity to spend a little time with you this afternoon. Um, what I'd like to do is, uh, spend a few minutes introducing you to Eight Minutes Solar Energy and then talk a little bit about the project, and, um, we'd, we'd love to then, uh, answer any questions you might have. I am going to try to clear up my screen if modern technology works. Uh, let me know if you all can see this.
We can see the, the PowerPoint.
Oh, jeez, technology works today. Thank you.
It's a miracle.
Sort of. Um, I am going to see. I guess my, my video's not on, but I guess that's okay right now. So again, thank you so much for your time this afternoon. I'm really honored to be here. Um, I want to thank, before I, I jump into this, Mr. Stark, Mr. Cox, and Mr. Eccles for their time and support in, in, um, uh, allowing us the opportunity to introduce Eight Minute and our Rockmont Solar and Storage Project to the county. Uh, really, really appreciate their, their time and energy and investment that the county's made thus far in terms of partnering with Eight Minute, and, uh, we're really excited about moving forward with the county, uh, on this project. Um, so first, a little bit about who Eight Minute is. Um, we are the, the largest independent solar power developer in the United States. Um, we have about twenty gigawatts versus, uh, of, of solar and storage projects currently in development in the U.S. We have over two gigawatts of PV power projects already in operation. Um, most of those are in California, uh, the southwest and the central area. Um, we currently have about a hundred and twenty-five employees in the company. We're growing at about twenty-five percent a year from a headcount standpoint. We have offices in California and in Texas. Um, we do not yet have offices in New Mexico. Um, we currently, uh, probably are working on about twenty-five projects, but currently we have two projects under construction. One is a, uh, massive, um, project currently being built in Clark County, Nevada, on the Moapa Indian Reservation, uh, referred to as the Eagle Shadow Mountain Project. It's three hundred and eighty megawatts. Uh, it, what's really remarkable about that project is the PPA price. That is the price at which the power being generated at the project is sold to an off-taker. And in, as you probably know, in almost all cases, the off-taker is a public utility. Um, that, that is one of the lowest solar energy costs in, ever in the, the United States. Very, very exciting project. We also are currently working on a two hundred and fifty megawatt project that we're constructing right in Texas. Um, that was, Texas is a pretty exciting state for us because we just, six months ago, finished our first project in Texas. So, you know, it's interesting, I've been with the company, this is my fourth year. When I got here four years ago, the only projects we'd done were in California, and now we're in Nevada, we're in New Mexico, and we're in Texas, um, and really two things are driving that. One is the, 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 the demand for renewable energy power projects because they become so economic and efficient. And, um, not only they less expensive than coal, but they're even less expensive than natural gas in, in many, many cases. Um, and of course, the, the need to protect the environment is another driver. Um, um, and so it's been a very exciting time. Um, this is our first project in New Mexico, as we've shared with, uh, your, your colleagues in the county and our new friends at Four Corners Economic Development, a number of us at, at Eight Minutes Solar Energy, including myself. We have, um, worked on, um, utility-scale solar power projects in New Mexico, uh, in prior lives with prior companies. But this would be, this will be Eight Minutes' first project in, in the state. Um, so jumping into the project itself, um, this will be a hundred megawatt utility-scale solar power project, uh, coupled with a thirty megawatt four-hour energy storage device. Uh, as you, as you probably know, um, solar projects generate power whenever it's sunny. Uh, and what a, a, a battery, what an energy. And what a, a battery, what an energy storage device allows the project to do is to store that energy when it's generated at peak sun, say at two o'clock in the afternoon, store it. And when everyone gets home from work and turns on their dishwashers and their televisions and turns down the air conditioning and stuff, you can release that power at the optimal time of day. So it makes that power much more efficient and valuable to the consumers and to the public utility when you had control more when that, that energy is released into the grid. The project, Rockmont, is actually two projects in one. The solar project is Rockmont Solar, and the storage project, we affectionately call Rockmont Storage. But from an operational standpoint, it is one, it is one overall project. It will sit on about fifteen hundred acres of land. It'll interconnect to the grid at the San Juan Generating Station, similar to some colleagues that were, I think, recently talking to you. And in fact, I want to take a moment and thank Photosol because they're pretty much two months ahead of us in talking with the county and kind of explaining to you some of the value proposition of, of, of a self-pay IRB. So I want to thank our, our friends at Photosol for, for probably allowing this to be a more streamlined IRB process with the county. The land on which the project will sit is primarily New Mexico State Trust lands, some small private lands, but primarily it's state land. It's in the northwestern corner of the state. I think I have a better map, here we go. You see, it's just north of Kirkland, Kirtland and Fruitland, north of US sixty-four and just west of New Mexico, I think one-seventy, which is the, I think that's La Plata Highway. Unfortunately, with the COVID, I usually come to these meetings live and I get to go visit the, where the, where the site is going to be. And so unfortunately, with the, with the current way of things, I haven't had the opportunity to get up yet to where the, where the project is going to be located. Again, it will, it will connect to the grid at the San Juan Generating Station. It's similar to the project that the, the county has just been considering with Photosol. This also is a replacement resource. And what that means, as I think you, you know, is that the IRB that we are looking to put in place is not intended to save any local property taxes, not the county local property tax, not the school local property tax, nor the community college local property tax. It is singularly focused on, on the state tax savings that are afforded under the IRB structure. And as you might imagine, when the public utility, like a PNM, puts out a request for proposals amongst developers saying, hey, we want people to bid an X-sized project for X megawatts, that RFP will indicate whether or not that project is a replacement resource or not. And what it means to PNM is that they're going to pay more for the power because this project will, will pay property taxes every year to the county and to the local taxing bodies that are in the county. And that extra cost results in a higher charge for electricity. And PNM obviously is prepared for that. And so our proposals to them for the sale of electricity were slightly higher than they would otherwise be. But the bids that we did give PNM and our competitors did give PNM did assume that the state taxes would not be imposed. So that is why, even though it's a replacement resource and we're, you know, very excited to move forward with all the local taxes, it's still very critical for the project's success and ability to move forward to be able to minimize the taxes that are allowed to be avoided. From a timing standpoint, we, it, we're, we're very, very, right now in the late stages of development. The facility study, it's being completed this quarter. The, the LGIA, which is the agreement that allows us to get energy to the grid onto the big high-voltage power lines, should be executed this quarter, P one of twenty-twenty-one. Our hope and expectation is that we will commence construction right at the end of this year, around December, sometime in Q four of twenty-twenty-one, and that the power plant will be done and in operation in the second quarter, probably June of twenty-twenty-two. So we've got a lot of work to do between now and the end of twenty-twenty-one, when we start construction. And then it's going to be very busy for about six months in San Juan County. A couple other pieces of, of the project. With the pilot, we're estimating, let me step back, I apologize. The way that the replacement resource works is that once you set up an IRB, technically, it's not subject to property tax, the project, because it's quote-unquote owned by the county. Accordingly, we enter into a pilot, a payment-in-lure of tax agreement with the county, pursuant to which we agree to pay to the county and all the local taxing jurisdictions the amount of tax that we would have paid you if it was a hundred percent taxed. That's referred to as a, a pilot payment. We estimate that that amount of pilot payments will be about six million dollars during the first ten years of operation and about nine million dollars over the first twenty years. The reason the first ten years is six million and the second ten years is estimated to be three million is because under New Mexico property tax law, the, the taxable value, the assessed value of that power plant goes down every year as its useful life matures and it, it has a smaller remaining value. The total investment expected is about a hundred and forty million dollars. That is about a hundred and ten million for the solar part of the facility and about thirty million of cost for the battery portion of the facility. Turning to jobs for a moment, there will be about an average of a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five jobs for the six- or seven-month construction period. The peak, a peak we expect to hit about three hundred and fifty construction jobs. The permanent number of jobs, as, as you probably learned from Photosol, is a very modest number. These are not power plants that have hundreds and, of moving pieces. These are pretty static power plants where the solar modules sit out in the field and just absorb the sun's energy and convert that to electricity. We're estimating only three permanent jobs. I did mention, if you can see this next page, that from a kind of quote-unquote legal standpoint, Rockmont Storage and Rockmont Solar are in two separate legal entities. Accordingly, all the legal documents will have to be duplicated, there'll be one for each, one IRB industrial revenue bond for each of the two legal entities. We have spoken with the county about that, Mr. Buckholz, your counsel. We've spoken with him about it, he's been sensitized to this. And I, I think, other than killing more trees, sadly, I don't think there's too much practical difference in, in this structure. I think the last thing I can mention is kind of on the heels of some of the questions you asked our, our predecessor about local involvement. When we move into a community to build a power plant, this is a massive investment, not only for us in terms of how much capital is going to be invested, but it, it, it's a big investment for the community too, inviting someone from outside in, because we're going to be here for thirty years. I mean, this, this plant is going to operate for at least thirty years. And so when we go into a community to build a power plant, we, we do as much outreach as we can. We've had the opportunity to meet with Four Corners Economic Development last year. We have since become members of Four Corners. We coordinated with Echo to provide some emergency food and relief, you know, during the, the winter season. And we look forward, we have not yet met with the county, the college, but we're looking forward to meeting with them to see how we might be able to work together. And with that, I, 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 first of all, appreciate you allowing me to provide such a huge amount of information in such a short period of time. With, with that, I'd love to take any questions and that you all might have.
I don't know if that's a question, but I would, I'd recommend reaching out to CCSD earlier than later to make sure that you can have conversations with them. Sometimes it's difficult to, to contact them, but I'd, I'd encourage you to make those efforts.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? This is Commissioner Totacini.
Yes, Commissioner Totacini.
I have a question. There's completed studies on the environmental side. Extreme drought. And I'm wondering, and the studies have anything that is of concern surfaced in the studies? I'd just like to know that.
Mr. Nelson, did you hear the question?
Yes, hi, Commissioner, I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't get to hear the entire question, but I, I think what I heard was inquiring about the project's water usage and understanding whether the project's water usage could disrupt further and exacerbate further some of the drought challenges that the county's having. Is that right?
Is that accurate, Commissioner Totacini?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
So, thank you, we did submit with our application some environmental study information to the county, which I can forward to you, Commissioner. Regarding water generally, what I, what I would say is the following, and again, we'll, we'll follow up on this question and get you additional information, but solar power plants do not use water normally. Again, these are inert modules that sit out in the sun and they absorb the sun's rays and they convert the sunlight to electricity. And then that is submitted into the grid. There are not big steam turbines that consume lots of, any water. There are not coal-fired facilities that need water for other resources, there are not retainage ponds or anything of the like. So the water usage is very minimal. The only time, in fact, that I, I'm aware of water usage is that under some operations and maintenance protocols, you will periodically wash the modules. My understanding, though, is that's, that's water that's dropped in and, and been sprayed on. So short of some specific cleaning of the modules that happens on some type of periodic basis, I don't believe there's really any water usage. The, the manner in which the project is constructed is done in conjunction and, in, in cooperation with the authorities. And I'm, I'm quite certain, again, that our, our construction proposals and our permits take into account the water requirements. So the short answer is I don't believe we're going to use any water other than potentially to wash modules on a periodic basis. But more specifically, we will follow up on this question, Commissioner, and get a more specific answer to you.
Is there any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Commissioner Fortner.
Mr. Nelson, this is Terry Fortner, and I, I was just jotting down a, a few questions that I have just because I'm learning about solar plants. And I'm curious, how long does a battery store energy?
So, you know, that's a, that's a really interesting question. I, I believe, now I'm a tax person, I'm not an engineer, but I've been doing this, I've been building solar power plants for, since two thousand and eight. So I've been doing it long enough that I kind of stayed at a Holiday Inn Express last night and I can, I can talk my way through most of this. So I can tell you as a non-engineer, is that technically you can store energy as long as you want, it's like a battery. So if you wanted to leave it in there, you could. But that's not how you optimize and get the most value out of the battery. The, the way that it's generally considered to be a four-hour battery, so what you would do, peak usage in most environments is around seven o'clock. That's when we all get home from work, and that's when we're cooking dinner and washing clothes, and the TV's on, and the AC's on, and that's the peak time. So if, if solar energy, the, the, the maximum generation of it, you know, hits at, say, three o'clock in the afternoon or two o'clock in the afternoon, and you really want to use it four hours later at seven, a four-hour battery is really what you want, because you store all that energy that's being generated in, when, when, when people don't need it most, and you release it four hours later when, again, when you have peak load, when you hit your peak load, particularly in the summertime when the heat's really hot and everyone's cranking their, their AC, particularly when they get home. So a battery will typically charge every day, and then it will release four hours later to serve that peak load. And then the next day, it'll do it all over again. But technically, again, I'm not an engineer, but my understanding is that technically, if you didn't want to ever release it, you, you could just let it sit there, but that would defeat the purpose of the battery. Keep in mind that batteries are, you know, very expensive. As I explained, we're estimating upwards to thirty million dollars on this, this battery storage system will cost upwards to thirty million dollars. So if you just put the energy in there and let it sit, that's a very expensive way to store a little bit of power. If you can do it every single day and you get three hundred and sixty-five turns of the battery, then the cost to use it comes down precipitously.
And you know what the life of a battery is?
You know, another really interesting question. The solar power plant, let's step back a second, the solar power plant degrades in efficacy about one-half of one percent a year or less. In other words, if we build a hundred megawatt solar power plant in a year, that power plant should still generate ninety-nine and a half megawatts of power. And in a year later, it should generate ninety-nine point oh-five megawatts. It's just a half a percent degradation a year. So that after thirty years of running the power plant, it should still be generating eighty-five percent of the amount of power generated on day one. And so even though we estimate that it will have a thirty-year useful life, in all intents and purposes, at the end of thirty years, no one's going to tear that thing down because it's still generating eighty-five percent of what it was generating on day one. A battery is similar, as I understand, with the difference that, that the, the degradation each year is more than a half a percent. I don't know what that magic number is, I don't know if it's one percent or ten percent, but it is a faster degradation than, than a PV power plant. So my understanding, and, and, and again, you have to, I'm a, I'm not an engineer, but my understanding is that you end up having to augment the battery, you know, later on in, say, year ten or something, you have to, you have to add some more battery to it to get it back up to the point where it's, it, it can function as it was designed to function on day one.
So that's kind of related to why you say thirty years, then? That's kind of your timeline.
The reason we say thirty years is frankly economic. If you're an investor, you know, you, you're, you need to get your investment back within thirty years. If you're a landowner and you want to rent the land, lease the land to us, you want to look at a thirty-year horizon. Once you get past thirty years, you know, when you talk about things economically, the net present value- things economically, the net present value of something, once you get out to 40, 50, 60 years, one, the net present value of that dollar is so mu- minimal. And secondly, you get to a credibility thing because I could I could tell you what I think power is going to be selling for in 60 years and no one's going to believe a word I say because because, you know, it's anyone's guess. So I think 30 years is kind of a rule of thumb to eat as the lifetime to economically consider a project like this.
Okay. And I just have one more question and a thinner request. Um, what what does it take on a daily basis or a weekly basis or what is maintenance like? What does that entail?
Um. So what is maintenance like? So you know, the 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 upside to this, the downside to this power plant is that it's only going to employ, say, three people on a permanent full-time basis. The upside to that is that you get 100 million dollars, 130 million dollars um of of tax base on your tax rolls and virtually no local services required to support that tax base because you don't need to hire teachers, you don't need to buy books, you don't need to add streetlights, you don't need public uh support because um for all intents and purposes, this is like a brain-dead um power plant that sits out and just absorbs the sun energy. So what do those three people do? Well, if it there wasn't a battery, there would probably only be one or two people there. And what they do is they mostly monitor the the electric systems, the 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 computer systems, what's referred to as SCADA, which is an acronym, which I don't recall exactly what it stands for candidly. But they spend a lot of time monitoring um all of the computer systems to make sure it's working properly. Things do break occasionally. Um, our system will i- is not, there's two kinds of PV power plants. One is a fixed tilt where the the modules sit at a certain fixed angle. And um, it just sits there. And then another one is a tracker technology where the modules actually track during the day as the sun goes overhead, they track ever so slowly that the angle to the sun to try to align the modules up to the optimal angle to the sun at all times to maximize the amount of power that it generates. And so when you have a tracker project, which again, Rockmont will be, um, it does require some more operations and maintenance because you have a little bit of moving pieces, certainly compared to a fixed tilt power plant. So it's it's operating the computer systems, managing the computer systems, it's um keeping uh the tracker systems running. Um, it's and then the reason I mentioned, you know, what it would be without an energy storage system is an energy storage system is a large um uh, it's a large physical asset. And that requires uh constant attention by one of the technicians to manage it, to make sure it's in proper working order, to make sure that nothing's breaking down on it, um, to 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 basically oversee and um ensure that the entire facility and all the equipment in it is being properly maintained at at uh any given time.
Thank you. And I guess just my last comment is that maybe we can take a tour. I'd like to see what a battery looks like. I just am curious about that.
Um. I'm trying to think, you know, we would let us look into that. Obviously, we're kind of all anxiously awaiting COVID-19 to be in the rear of the mirror so we can all travel again. Um, but we would certainly be willing to, happy to facilitate that. We, as I mentioned at the outset, we do not have another project in New Mexico right now. Um, so we can't take you to one of our um existing projects, but I'm sure there are some projects in New Mexico um that have an energy storage uh component. And we will find that out and and get that to you, find the closest one and see if we might be able to facilitate a a tour.
Thank you.
No.
Just to throw out there that Vegas is in Clark County.
Oh, that's true.
Just throw that out there.
I have to tell you, uh, the 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 project in Las Vegas, uh, well, in Clark County, thank you, does not have an energy storage um system attached. It's just just PV. Um, it's just PV.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
No.
Mr. Nelson, thank you for for presenting to us today. We look forward to talking with you.
I very much appreciate the time and I look forward to promptly following up on these couple of questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That brings us to uh our report from our county manager minus eight minutes.
Minus eight minutes. Um, I guess that's a tribute to the eight-minute solar presentation, right? Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, just a quick update, as you know, today was the start of the legislative session in Santa Fe, a 60-day session, and uh this will be a very different session than we've ever encountered before, uh, given it will be a hybrid session uh with um legislators uh there for certain periods of the session. Um, the House, I think, having a different set of rules from the Senate and how they're going to operate, certainly, I think, and I'm sure we'll learn more this evening um as they started the session and worked through um initial bills. But I know the House was Speaker was proposing a five-bill limit per legislator. Um, and that was not the case in the Senate, so uh it'll be interesting to see how that plays out. I can tell you, as you know, we use a New Mexico Legislative Reports system um here, and then of course, New Mexico counties, which we um are part of that organization, professional organization, uses that same session. As of right now, there have been 265 bills either prefiled or introduced today. Uh, and we're tracking those all uh very carefully using our tracking system. And of course, we'll be weekly, if not in some cases daily, certainly when we get near the end of the session, updating you on the progress of bills and if it's a bill that would be uh potentially adverse to San Juan County or maybe a bill that we would support. We, you know, I would bring those forth to you for for your awareness and consideration. Um, but like I said, it's going to be extremely different on how we interact. Um, you know, only legislators, their staff, and a small number of media members will be allowed inside of the roundhouse. Everything else will be done virtually. Uh, we assume that that the public and and other interested groups will be able to appear remotely to provide comment during committee meetings and um and and to to get that feedback to legislators. Uh, but I I think obviously making sure we stay in close contact with our local legislators, which we always do, but certainly more important this year to get a feel for what's happening and where things are heading. So um, you know, this session, the uh the deadline for bill introductions is February 18th. And so um, we're just at the tip of the iceberg as it comes to more bills to come. So we'll be doing lots of reading, lots of evaluating, and lots of tracking. Uh, and of course, the session ends uh March 20th. And so uh a lot is going to happen between now and then. So I never hesitate to reach out for any anything that you might need relative to that. So uh, and then with that, the New Mexico Counties Winter Conference, uh normally we'd be down there um this time of the year, uh probably thankful that we can do this uh virtually, given all the snow we had. That wouldn't have been a fun travel day today. Um, but uh anyway, that that takes place uh starting tomorrow with general sessions and some good topics there and and certainly if you need any help with accessing those, please let us know. So that's all I have for you tonight. Any questions?
So?
You said eight minutes. I kept it to four.
All right. Any any questions for uh our manager? All right, gets us to reports from elected officials and department heads. We'll start with department heads. Don't even get to hear from Mike Mastas?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, uh, I did speak to Mr. Mastas earlier. And uh, you know, we discussed if there was anything of of value at this point, certainly related to COVID. Um, I think last meeting, we provided a fairly robust update regarding um vaccinations, the vaccination distribution schedule, and I know his office has been in close, close contact with the Department of Health and and trying to fully maximize the the vaccines that are being distributed to our area. I think the number one takeaway, and I know even internally here uh with our employees at the county, if you're interested in getting uh the vaccine, please go to the state's website to register. Um, there is a phone number that's available. Uh, unfortunately, it 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 seems to be very difficult to register via phone. I know Commissioner Sullivan, if he's still on the line, has had his own personal experiences. I'm trying to do that, but it, uh, anyway, um, if you can register online, please do that. Uh, that's going to be the best way um for for anybody here tonight in the meeting uh online or in our community in receiving a a vaccine. So that's critical.
All right. Any reports from elected official or? That's damn it. I think the last two days were in the 60s and today's in the 30s. That's great. I didn't realize that. But we have to get down to what, a rolling average of eight or less?
Eight, eight per 100,000, which for us equates to 10 over a 14-day period uh and a positivity rate under 5%. Both of those to be able to move into the green category. If you hit one of those markers, you're able to move into the to the yellow category. Uh, Harding County is in green as of the last update. Uh, and I believe uh Union County is in yellow. Uh, what's interesting to note there is is there hasn't been any consistency. Um, so we've had counties since the inception of this um program from the state that no one's maintained their status over a two-week period. Um, they've always, if they reached a a yellow, they've retracted back. Um, they haven't continued that into a two-week period. So I'd be curious to see if Harding and or Union can can change that dynamic.
All 800 of them can.
I do believe, Mr. Chairman, that there are more cows than people in Harding County.
That's that's that is what they say, isn't it? All right. Any other, any other reports from elected officials? Okay, any? Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, you might go. I haven't got in on that. I'll be back. All of them left my number and then they called back.
Oh, well, good. That's a good update, Commissioner Sullivan.
All right.
Yeah, I just because uh I have four and I got my number and then prompted to press zero and and then I had to press four and then I pressed one and then, I don't know. I just went where they told me, I guess.
All right. Well, I'm not going to skip over comments, uh, input from the general public this meeting. And are there any?
Chairman, we did not receive any in our office via email, fax, or um written correspondence. And I don't know, Mr. Cox of or Mr. Neely, if you're able to to see anybody on there that.
Mr. Chair, I don't see anybody here that has indicated they're interested in speaking at this time.
Mr. Neely, are you?
About as well as I can be, sir. Thank you for asking.
Good. All right. Um, with there not being any comments from the general public, that brings us to the end of our agenda, and I'll declare this meeting adjourned.
Good job, John.
Have a great.